Hi, good evening. This is Eric Moore and welcome to the Town Meeting Study Committee. A meeting of September 24th, nineteen twenty-four. I'm the Chair of the TMSC. We'll move forward to take role. I'm not expecting Keith Bergman tonight. Katie Bresnik, are you here, please?
Here.
Thank you. Kristen Haggerty, please.
Here.
I'm not expecting Alice Kaufman tonight. Eric Moore is here. I'm not expecting Parashar Patel tonight. Phil Swain, please. You're on your phone, so, and you're muted. I see you online, Phil, but when you can speak up, please. Gotcha. Thank you. And Eric Van Loon, please? Understood. Thank you. And Eric Van Loon? Eric? You are muted. Speak up when you can, please. Now, we have an odd situation tonight because as you can tell, we have, we do have a quorum of five people. However, we're gonna lose Phil Swain in about fifteen minutes. And as well, we'll lose Eric Van Loon at about, at about eight o'clock. We have one thing that I think would be correct for the committee to consider on the whole. So what I'm going to do is to shift our agenda to discuss the survey questions in the next, for the next fifteen minutes. See if we need to take a vote or if we have consensus on the actions there. And then it will shift back to the normal routine of public comment. I see a few folks online from the public, and so I appreciate your patience in this. And we'll make sure that we do come back to public comment. Moving forward to the survey. So Carmen Reese produced a new version of the four questions relating to remote voting, clickers, and so on. And over the course of the last week or so, you know, the committee made a lot of different edits to that. One of the things that I think Katie and I have noted in reviewing the survey is that these are long. This is long chunks of text, and in the way that they deliver through the survey online, it's easy to skip through them. As well, Keith Bergman suggested using values questions in relationship to solutions questions as well. And so I thought, hmm, maybe just values questions. And so I wrote a set of questions as well, paralleling what Carmen had revised. And I'd like for us to review both sets of questions in the next ten minutes or so. And the driver is that the survey needs to lock down by tomorrow. All other elements of the survey look good. I think I've had a chance to review the survey online, as has Katie. And I think we're feeling good about that. But the big question is, what's the format of the four questions? So I took what the comments were from the group and based upon what Carmen had written. And the top part is what Carmen had produced with the group's input. I think one argument that I saw from a citizen comment was that we needed to make some, the perception was that this question is written was biased. So I added one statement here, that some argue that a public vote is essential to the function of town meeting as a citizen legislature. I've reformatted, one second, Katie. I've reformatted this quest, this text as well, to make it easier to scan. But, and then the two questions that I propose to replace question eleven in the survey would be these two below. Katie, I recognize you, please.
I was just curious if you assigned a clerk or not. If you haven't, I can jump in and do it.
No, no, I will clerk tonight. I meant to say that. I'm clerking. So thank you for that touch. Yeah, absolutely.
I don't mind doing it if you would like.
No, no, it's all set. Thank you. I own this one. So, so now, just before the meeting, I sent out the revisions to both, you know, the revisions to Carmen's revisions and as well to the parallel questions. So I don't know whether folks have had a chance to review that or not. But let's take a few minutes just to take a look at what we have and see if from the committee, we have any discussion about the top approach or the bottom approach. Carmen, please.
Hi, I just wanted to comment on the addition of the bullet that talks about what some argue.
Sure.
I have a real question about whether any notation on arguments is appropriate in the survey question. But if you are gonna put an argument on one side of the question, I think you probably have to balance it with an argument on the other side of the question.
Yeah, the text that I saw from a citizen had a balanced argument. I thought that fair enough. I thought, you know, that
It's just an observation. And then on the way you framed the values questions. First of all, I'll just note that I know that others read the draft that I did and changed paper voting slips to ballots. I've actually been corrected by the town clerk on calling our voting slips ballots because
Yeah, got it.
So, you know, so I don't know that it's, this is a place where it's critical to have the correct legal definition. But I have been corrected by the town clerk on that. And then the other thing that I would say is on your second values questions. Well, I guess you've got, should we routinely use a secret ballot? And then the second one is, should we maintain the practice of paper ballots? I feel like there's a little confusion in this question between what happens when we take a paper, a vote by paper ballot? What happens when we do a standing counted vote? And what happens when we take a visually counted vote by raised paper voting slips? So I feel like there maybe needs to be a little untangling of that in that, in that question.
Second question or the first question?
The second one. The second.
The second one.
Yeah.
I'm wondering why wouldn't, the second question shouldn't be the same as that, what's at the top? Should Concord use electronic voting?
Well, there are two arguments in favor of electronic voting. One is that it's faster in some cases, which are significant. And the second argument is that it would be, it could be, would be private. So the two distinct value judgments in a way about the experience at town meeting. And rather than saying, you know, let's, should we use clickers? You know, following Keith's approach, I said, well, you know, do we want to, do we, do these respondents want to routinely use a secret ballot? And, you know, do these respondents want to keep the paper ballots or the paper?
I think that that could be done, Eric, if you leave the two bottom bullets. And the question right above that could be, should Concord use electronic voting at town meeting? Or maintain the practice of paper ballots?
I see. So rewrite the question as, should town meeting maintain paper ballots or use clickers?
Yeah, because the question eleven is the top, has the word electronic voting. That's what this is about. And then, but neither one of the two questions at the bottom actually even, well, it's mentioned in the second bullet on the second one, but
Yeah, but you'd like it to be more prominent. Okay, I'm gonna go to, thank you, Eric. I'm watching time a little bit.
Do you mean these as alternates?
Yeah.
Do you mean these as alternates, though? Just to clarify?
Yeah, so we would use these bottom two in place of the text above.
Okay, so it's either or. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I think we're gonna run out of time. Four questions. I move that we approve the top question as revised by Carmen and edited otherwise now. And that we not consequently not do the two, what you call value-based questions below, that we approve use of Q eleven as drafted by Carmen. And, you know, I think we're gonna have to vote on these quickly.
Let me go to Kristen Haggerty and then to Katie briefly, please. Actually, let me recognize Shannon.
Shannon, please. As a procedural, no, I just wanted to say that also an option for a motion this evening could be to authorize the Chair to finalize the wording of the questions. Just if that's something you all need to think about rather than going one by one.
You know, Phil, if we take that motion to authorize the Chair, then I can get your comments either now or via email. And we can continue the discussion more fully, reflecting both what the public has to say on this and what the rest of the committee has to say on this.
I'm happy to withdraw my motion and authorize Eric to finalize the wording of the questions. You know, based on the comments that we all make to these four questions.
I second Phil Swain's motion.
Okay, thank you. May we take a vote on that, please? I'm gonna go through. Katie Bresnik, please.
Aye.
I'm sorry, was there any discussion on that?
I have a point, but it can become after this.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Kristen Haggerty?
Aye.
Eric Moore, aye. Phil Swain?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. And Eric Van Loon, please?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So, so we've taken a vote to allow the Chair, it's me, to make the final determination on what the text will be for these four questions. So what I'm gonna do is, I'd like to walk through the four, so thank you, Phil. We're gonna walk through these four questions now so we see them. And then we'll discuss them, and I want to take public comment on these as well. And we'll give that the time that it needs to have a thorough discussion. So, so moving on to the second question. The copy from Carmen is modified by suggestions from the committee, if I got it accurately. Is are you in favor of seeking special state legislation to allow Concord to try remote participation in town meeting? I'll say that I've been calling this remote voting because the participation part, the speech part is not required. Doesn't require a home rule change, more or less. The reworded question, which would replace this question, is are you in favor of being able to vote remotely for town meeting? And again, the some argue pattern, it's not balanced. And then in a clear statement that state law would require a change. Let me recognize Kristen Haggerty, please, because you had something to say earlier. I don't know if it's on this question or not.
It was primarily on the other question, so it can wait until after public comment.
Okay, and Phil, I see your hand up. Is that for now? No, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, good. Katie Bresnik, please?
Maybe just for clarity, that maybe rewording your question to remote participation and voting, to be able to participate and vote remotely. So people don't get confused about maybe the difference.
Good. Good, that makes sense to me.
In general, maybe just a comment that like in Shannon put together this survey and Eric and I were able to review it. And when there is a lot of text, people just aren't going to read it. So I appreciate Eric's attempt to make this short because like that, both of us found ourselves skipping over the narrative. And that's, I think, one of the reasons behind this rewording. So, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
I would just chime in that I think these bullets, I think that this whole presentation is much more crisp and invites people to zip through.
The bottom one versus the top, you mean?
I mean, for all four of these, the way that it's now formatted.
I see. Okay, so are you referring to the format, Eric, or the content, or both?
Both, both. I think edited streamlined, the bullets are quick.
Got it. Okay, thank you. So moving on to the third question, which is the, what we've informally called the Australian ballot question. Are you in favor of separating deliberation from voting, et cetera? And Carmen, and again, I took what Carmen had written and what their group had commented on. I did take the liberty of striking one B, which is Xed out here. And then the stuff in yellow is an addition that I made in New Hampshire versus few. Because I think it's actually in the neighborhood of a third of New Hampshire towns are using this. And New Hampshire calls it a ballot referendum, if they're not referring to it as SB two, which is jargon effectively. And then the alternate wording is this one here. Are you in favor of being able to skip group deliberation and struck just and vote for town meeting? I think, you know, I had some questions about the wording there, and I'll get to you in a second, Katie. And then the, again, the cut points below. Katie, please?
I think I appreciate the condensed text of this question. I do like the way Carmen worded the question, I think, a little bit better. And because I think it's unclear, maybe in the bottom question about what is happening when. So being maybe a little bit more crisp about deliberation happens. And then voting subsequently at the polls will then occur. Which I think gets at that in the bullet points. But I think the question would be clarified a little bit more on some of those points.
So I recognize your point. I think that the wording is given by Carmen most clearly references the town meeting article from Dino Skanatos. I think what I did in wording this question was to consider that the folks who kind of show up, they're issue-driven. When they want to show up, they don't seem that interested in attending the whole of town meeting. And even perhaps their minds are made up before they come to town meeting. And so there's, I believe, a group of voters at town meeting that just want to get their vote in. And so the question that I'm framing here is much broader than, I think, the one framed in the article and unwritten by Carmen. But I think that the question speaks to an underlying value that I'd like to understand better about our voters, which is just, my mind is made up. I want to get my vote in. So that's where that came from.
That doesn't work, Eric, is the last part of the question, vote for town meeting? I mean, we're not voting for or against town meeting. It's voting on town meeting warrant articles or something along those lines.
Yeah, noted. That was poorly worded.
Yeah, I think that's what I was getting at as well. I think the first part is fine. But yeah, like kind of getting to the point where you go to vote at the polls and submit a ballot that way.
Okay, are you in favor of being able to skip group deliberation and vote on town meeting articles at the polls?
Perfect, or something.
Okay.
Close, good.
Okay. All right, good. One more of these questions. This is the representative town meeting question. Again, there was no article in Town Meeting twenty-four referencing this, but we believe this to be, you know, it was an important question going back thirty years ago. And I think we still believe it to be a relevant question. So Carmen's wording above, my wording below, not a huge difference, frankly, in terms of the amount of text. Again, the pattern of some argue. But I wanted to raise the question of representation in the question. That, you know, a motivation, get you in a second, Kristen. The motivation for this question is that, you know, there's, you know, because we're below ten percent typically in participation, are we really, is town meeting really adequately representing the interests of the town? So I wanted to raise it explicitly to see, to see again what, how that might drive responses to this question. So Kristen Haggerty and then to Carmen, please. Kristen?
When I, I guess I would, I would rather see the question say, you know, are you in favor of keeping Concord's open town meeting? Rather than replace it with representative town meeting? Because for some reason, when I read this, it's almost feels like a leading statement. And people be like, well, wait, why would we do that? You know what I'm saying? So by itself with no context, it's like, well, wait, why are you asking? Are we going to do this? So, or something to the effect like, you know, are you in favor of keeping Concord's, you know, open town meeting as our, as our primary form of government? But that's just my thought when I read that.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Phil Swain, because I know you're on the clock, Phil, and then to Carmen, I'm sorry. Phil, please?
Sorry. So I concur with Kristen on that question. But I also just want to say, before I have to leave, that in general, I'm not in favor of the bullets that begin with some argue that. Even though the content may be good, just some argue that seems, I think, a little, you know, sort of advocating something. So I'd prefer not to have the word some argue that in any of these questions. And I've got, I've gotta go now, so I'm sorry.
All right.
To your advice.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you for your participation tonight. Thank you. Carmen, please?
I just wanted to note that a representative town meeting would probably have somewhere around two hundred and fifty members. That's what it is in most towns, and that would put you at less than five percent. Maybe less than two and a half percent of the population.
How was that number determined?
Yeah, how, why couldn't we say fifty? I mean, is there something in state law that requires a certain number of voters?
We could do seven representative council, right?
Yeah, you know, you have, you would, you vote by precinct. You, members would represent particular precincts. And, you know, I can just tell you that the average is from, you know, from a hundred something to maybe as many as three hundred town meeting members. But that, those are kind of what the averages are. And I think, I don't believe that it's prescribed by statute what you have to have for a number of members or a percentage of your voting population. But certainly the legislature has to agree to pass your special legislation to let you do it.
I'm sorry, does that mean that town, assuming that we did this, our open town meeting would have to vote how many representatives there should be for representative town meeting?
Yeah, that's correct.
So we could equally say fifty? Ten per precinct?
Yeah, I don't know that the legislature would accept that, but I suppose you could try it.
So, so this is difficult, it's a little complicated, right? That's my take away here. The comment was, you know, should we keep open town meeting, you know, relative to the possibility of representative town meeting? And then I think there are some salient things to say about the composition of representative town meeting. But, so I get that. What I'd like to do is to open the opportunity for public comment on these four questions. We'll have time for general public comment a little bit later. But if there is public comment, I see folks in the public online around any of these four questions, I would welcome that. It's two minutes is the upper bound for comments. David Allen, member of the public, recognize you first, please?
Thanks, Eric. Could we go back, please, to the text that's up currently for eleven? Thanks. Since I'm just seeing, I have to scurry around real hard to get the head together. On this question about some argue, I think the following is the case. For the committee to do what's hoped for, for Concord, it is really essential that its presentation be neutral. In cases in which there are clearly two sides, as there are here in the clicker question, and perhaps in some of the others. Though you might not use the phrase some argue, I don't think the committee succeeds at being neutral, as to say. It fails because it's biased unless it gets out in simple, comprehensible words, the essentially opposing views, which you have tried to do here, which I have to say, I'm personally so appreciative. And I personally think that reducing the text to a pair of bullets is just terrific. Hard to do, very, very hard to do in a complex question like this. But I think you're much more likely to get people to read it and it convey what it needs to convey. What I need to do is spend a little bit looking at this text to see exactly where I'd come out on this question of whether or not they are successfully presenting either side in a completely neutral fashion. And I want to emphasize, even though I'm very much known to be on one side of the question, nothing is more important to me than there be a fair, neutral presentation of the view on the other side. That's the only way we can go forward successfully. I would ask, please, to invite others, give me a moment to look at the wording here. Perhaps I might come back if I have a thought. And let me say, thanks so much for what you've done here. In my view, really moves it ahead. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the procedural situation is that the committee members, sort of, only in the last couple of hours, got this redrafted version. And one thing that could be done is to put that more or less immediately up on the town website so that anybody that's here listening, David, or anybody else, would be able to see all of these. And with a, with a goal that they, comments get in by midnight or sometime very, very soon, given the necessity of finalizing this.
Shannon, that would go to you as a task. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I can't, I can't imagine that before midnight tonight, I would wind up receiving a number of comments that we won't be able to manage.
But simply putting the PowerPoint on the committee page?
Yeah, well, so did you, this is the PowerPoint that you emailed, like, at five o'clock or so?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I can
Well, yeah, the PowerPoint I emailed at five o'clock had the four questions in an introductory page. So this is the, this, what we're seeing right now is the full, is the full doc for the meeting.
Okay, yours was just updated. But yeah, I can just put that where the meeting packets are on the committee page.
Other questions or comments from the public, I'll say focusing on this current question, the clicker question. I think the discussion around some argue, quote unquote, I don't have an answer for that. I'd love, I'd love an answer for that in terms of how to represent a point of view around the some argue, you know, phrasing. Okay, I'm gonna move forward to, okay, I'm gonna recognize Dino Skanatos, resident of Concord. Dinos, please, two minutes. And I'm not seeing your microphone engaging yet. Do you have your microphone on?
Hear me?
Yeah, now I can hear you. Good.
I was just gonna say, some argue, you know, a better phrasing might be, one possibility could be this, with respect to this question, with possible advantages versus possible disadvantages, or pro and con, or something like that. You know, it'd be, you know, neutral, you know, with respect to whatever the issue is, depending on the question, that's all.
Okay, good. Yeah, thank you.
All right, that's all, this is my comment.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments on the clicker question, the electronic voting question? I'm gonna move into any public comments on the remote participation, the remote voting question? Any public comments on that? I'll take new comments there. I see none. I'm gonna move forward. I'll get David Allen, please?
Sorry, takes a minute to turn the video and the like on. I'd like to emphasize the importance of the participation part. I can't imagine, frankly, the legislature having an interest in something simply remote voting. But more than that, the legislature only succeeds if there's deliberation. That's what it's all about. The vote caps it, but and in fact, as is well known, having worked on this with David Carr, who's also on here now for going on a decade, you can definitely put together a mechanism Uh, you can definitely put together a mechanism that allows a participation remotely. Uh, once again, uh, as to wording, I'd have to. Uh, step back and look at it a little bit, but hopefully, uh, by midnight, uh, we'll have some thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public or from the committee on, on the second question, the remote participation question? Uh, seeing none, I'm moving forward. Okay, the, uh, uh, ballot referendum question. Any comments or questions in this one from the public or from the committee? Uh, seeing none, I'm up. Okay, Katie Bresnik, please.
Um, just for, for your version of the question, I know you mentioned this before, like getting. To the point where people, like, understanding whether people want to skip that portion. I think we need, maybe need to make it clear that group, the deliberation will still be occurring. Um, which I don't know if that comes across clearly here, like maybe people might assume we're just going to drop that part altogether and just vote. Um, so maybe just keep in mind as we're reviewing the question for the final draft.
Sure. Thank you. Moving forward again, the representative town meeting, I feel like we've taken questions in this already. Uh, but last call for comments and questions. Okay, so, so, um, thank you everyone for your patience in this discussion. Um, I'll go through and, um, um, Carmen, any last words on this? Uh, Kristen Haggerty, please.
So, uh, uh, not changing question eleven, but I, I didn't realize, um, in the survey where we have, um. Whether you're less likely or much more likely to attend. That we, I don't think we have if my vote was private on there. Oh, we do? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we have le- less likely to attend, yeah, there, there is a reference to, to concerns over my vote being private.
I think that's further up in the survey, that's like a deterrent in the, one of like the, um, barriers to attendance, but I don't think it's in the table, but I can double check.
Well, and the reason why I wonder if it would be useful in the table is, um. I mean. I think that's what we're trying to understand, right? So that, you know, is it going to make it faster? You know, you could argue that it, it, it might, but as we know, wouldn't be appreciably faster. But the, the larger incentive, I think, is that. You know, we're hearing some, some people say, well, more people will come if their vote is private and, you know, this is. A way to, you know, make sure we're including as many people as possible. And I know that the flip side is the, um, uh. You know, that the public nature of the legislature, and I guess. I'm wondering specifically to that question, would people be more likely to come if, if their vote was private? I think that would actually be a relevant piece of information. In other words, you know, should we use electronic voting doesn't actually. Say the same thing. So that would be something that I, I would hope. And even, even in the table, because we're, we're trying to see what is moving the needle, so. I, I, yeah, you're right. Thank you for reminding me it was in the deterrent area. Um, but removing that barrier. Or is it, is it going to shift the needle? So without trying to add anything, this, this to me is, is a particularly. A, a larger issue than I realized, I think.
Good, good, thank you. Uh, Carmen, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to note, there is a, um. There is a slightly different referendum question than this question, which asks, should every. Vote at town meeting be subject to a referendum vote at the polls after town meeting? Um, and that is, um, the limited option, um, for referendum. Uh, as kind of the safety valve thing, if, if. Efficient number of people are really upset about something that happened at town meeting that they can ask for it to go to the polls and. Um, that, that is available under statute for representative town meetings. Uh, and I know Keith said that he didn't believe any open town meeting had it, but in fact, it is in the town along Meadows Charter. Uh, so they do have a, uh, limited referendum option, and I think, you know, they need. I forget what it is, but I, I think they need like ten percent of their voters within two weeks after the town meeting and. And there are only certain kinds of votes you could have the referendum on, and they don't include budget articles or. Um, or zoning articles, but anyway, so I, I just don't know if, um. Uh, so I, I noticed that you don't have all of the, um. You didn't capture all of the suggested edits that Keith had in, in, um, uh, in, in what I saw. But he had kind of mixed those, um.
Yeah.
But the interesting question is whether, um, that is a separate question that you do want to ask. Whether people feel that a limited referendum option, uh, should be made available. Um, for, uh, when a large number of people would like to see something voted on.
Sure.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Um, if we did have something like, uh, like that, I would suggest that it be folded into. Uh, this question, r- rather than make five.
Sure. Good, thank you. Uh, I see a couple of hands from the public, I'm going to take those. Uh, David Carr first, please, and then David Allen. David Carr, please.
So, so I, 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 that last point really, really, um, stri- strikes home to me because I, 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 I. Do appreciate, I mean, Mr. Gannatas had a, had a very, some very good points about, about, um. Things happening, sort of the tail end of town meeting and people aren't there and, and maybe a lot of people don't like it. Uh, and this, 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 so that, so that last thing is then. And it was the whole thing about having a, an Australian ballot and everything. I'm wondering what happens to the consent calendar, for example, and do we vote in the consent calendar as a whole, do we have to vote every single one of them at the, at the polls? I, I, I just, you know, i- it seems like it could get very complicated.
So I have a comment about that. Let me just preempt, uh, David Allen, uh, and thank you, Mr. Carr. So, so I think, you know, there are different ways that we could look at doing a referendum ballot. Uh, one of them is this limited referendum, uh, one of this is, it's all, it's all referendum. Uh, we may find some other options as well. I think in the context of the survey. I think it's trying to get, uh, uh, I believe a value judgment around, do you really believe in deliberation or voting without deliberation or not? Um, uh, uh, that's a way to look at that. Uh, but I expect that we're going to have, uh, uh. Uh, at least one meeting where we focus on, uh, so to speak, the, the broad referendum questions. And I think there we can get into the details about what, what different things might work or might not work. Um, uh, Katie, I'm just going to recognize you and then go to David Allen. Thank you.
Sure, just quickly, um, I think it, it up, up to your judgment about if we edit this question or not. But if we did want to incorporate that aspect of like some items voted on at the polls. This could be one where instead of like a yes, no response, we have no, um, some items. That are contentious or some other wording that, um, gets to that point or, um, all items. Or are all articles, so we have like three options. So none, some or all. Um, as a, if we do want to capture this, but, um, I could go either way on it.
My, my worry is that the nuance is going to go straight over everybody's.
Yeah, that's what I do worry with, with this, with this, you know, short span we have for these, for their attention.
Um, uh, David Allen, please, briefly.
Certainly, um, following on Carmen's observation about, uh, the numbers. When there is representative town meeting, I know that Lexington is limited, absolutely, to a bit over two hundred. Um, and in fact, to have a perspective. Uh, if we had ten percent of the registered voters at town meeting, we'd have twelve hundred people there. Uh, in fact, uh, comparative, uh, legislatures like the. Uh, Federal House of Representatives has four hundred and thirty-five. So maybe it's not a shock that we could get away with two hundred. Second, and this was spurred by the conversation here, uh, on time saving, we've done some work, uh. Acton actually spent fifteen minutes longer because they use clickers. They didn't save any time. They.
So, I, that, I'm going to cut you off there, David. I don't want to litigate that question. Yeah.
Just, just, uh, we deal with facts here. Thanks.
Good, all right, thank you. Um, so I feel that we've had, uh, public as a good opportunity to comment. Is there any general comments from the public, uh, uh, before we carry on and again, mindful of time, uh, with Eric Van Loon's time as well? Uh, anything general from the public? Uh, I see nothing.
Yeah.
Uh, stuff in Twitter? Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, I don't know why my, uh, video, oh, start video, sorry about that.
That's all right.
I just. I didn't see in the, in the questions, any kind of, um. Positioning to say that, you know, the. Town meeting votes with the. Raising your ballot, um, are public as are our legislative representatives in Congress. Or in Beacon Hill, to make that analogy. And. I, I think that's part of the argument, but I also think that. I, I didn't see anything else in the survey that kind of gave survey participants that grounding. Which the flip side is to say, um. Would you like to not know how your representative, state representative, state senator, congressional representative voted on anything? Would you like them to keep it secret? Just.
Good. So, so please come back when we talk about, uh, questions of privacy. Uh, at, at town meeting, along with, uh, a more detailed discussion of, of clickers. Uh, it's an interesting point. I think there are different perspectives on that, and I think I expect to have a vigorous discussion about it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that'll be October twenty-eighth, but that's not definite yet.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Uh, moving forward, uh, so, uh, we'll look at minutes, uh, uh, coming up. Uh, so a few things going on. Uh, we have, uh, some updates. So we'll have to talk about this on Monday, right? But the public forum that we're planning for the twenty-second is, uh, uh, it's in person. It won't be online, it won't be hybrid. Uh, I think in terms of, uh, accessibility questions, in terms of. Giving, uh, more access to the public, to, to the questions that we want to raise and discuss. Uh, it would be correct to offer an online only instance of the forum. I don't know when to schedule that. Uh, and I think I'll just float that question here, uh, but I think we'll just have to come back to that on Monday with the, with the, with the, with the forum. Uh, Parashard, uh, did some summary reporting from the here towns, it's in the packet. Uh, we don't have Parashard tonight, so we'll have to come back for that. Uh, Alice Kaufman did have a conversation with, uh, the Chair of the Disabilities Commission and, uh. Their comments were very positive and we'll see that in the nine thirty packet. Uh, and, um. Uh, I think we'll just have to talk about remote voting and home world picture on the thirtieth as well. Um. Uh, moving forward, so we've talked about the survey, um, one additional thing, so the outreach, uh. So the status of the survey at this point is that, uh, Shannon has built, uh, and, and Katie and I have reviewed. A survey based on Microsoft Forms, which is the IT standard, uh, for Concord. Uh, it looks good. Um, I think, uh, um, there's a typeable URL, uh, there's no worries about the QR code. But we'll take a look at the postcard mockup in just a second. Um, I was interviewed by, um. Uh, Celeste Katz Marston last week from the bridge. And, uh, that interview is going to appear, I believe, in this week's bridge. Uh, I, I hope it was a good, it was a pleasant conversation, I, you know, who knows if I talked too much or not, but. Um, uh, and then we could, we should expect a lead time of about a week for getting a letter into the bridge. Uh, so, and then, uh, I was invited to provide a guest piece for the bridge as well. Uh, the copy and that's due by October ninth, and we'll discuss, um, some options for that, uh, when we need to get on Monday. In terms of outreach, Katie, thank you, uh, for, for connecting to Alcott, Thoreau and Willer PTGs. And can you assume as well the middle school and the high school?
Yep, that's correct. I have all the info and a blurb ready to go for when the survey goes live.
Awesome. I ran into the, uh, uh, ran into Pat Nelson, uh, who was very happy to, to, uh. Forward some information about the survey to the Concord Children's Center and to the preschool community. Um, I'll get something out to the boards and committees as well and to the League of Women Voters. Um, I don't have anybody lined up for reaching out to the council and agent, uh, for outreach. Um, if there are any takers on this call, otherwise we'll come back to it on Monday.
I'll, I'll put that on my list.
Awesome. Thank you, Kristen.
Um, and Eric, I can send you the blurb I'm going to send to the schools, which I think will be applicable to the, um, preschool age folks too. Um, if you want to use the same thing or doctor it up however.
Great, thank you. Um, in terms of, uh, letters to the editor for the bridge, uh, um. This is a short deadline for something that would go out in the October fourth paper. Uh, so it may not be reasonable to, to try to get something squeezed in there. Uh, so we might pass in having a letter there. But, uh, we can come back to their, on a meeting on the thirtieth, uh, for a letter that would publish on the eleventh and a different one that would publish on the twenty-fifth. Unless there's anyone here.
Is the, is the, um. Is the, uh, your, so your interview is, um, that's going to appear this Friday is about kind of the work of the committee, right?
Yeah, and there's a lot of like, hey, the survey, please come take the survey.
Okay, because I was going to say that, that would be the only thing that I would say to have on, on October fourth is like. Please, please do the survey or, you know, this is your opportunity, but if you already have a, an article coming out. And then I think we could reserve that for closer to the end of the month as a plea that says, you know.
Sure.
We, there's still time.
Okay, good. Uh, thank you. Moving forward, uh, these are two mockups, uh, Donna. Uh, uh, I'm sorry, I'm good blanking our last.
McIntosh.
I knew it, yeah, thank you. Uh, uh, and Shannon, uh, worked to, to mock these up. Um, so this is the one side of the card, this is the address goes here and the other side of the card, the obverse, as it were. Um, the differences are, you know, here are the copy of town meeting study committee is seeking to understand ways. Boom, boom, boom. And here are, uh, different wording, tell the town meeting study committee how well town meeting works for you. Uh, Katie Bresnik, please.
Just the first version says, um, the town study meeting committee, so it should be flipped, town meeting, study committee.
Yeah, 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 wow, great. Um, okay.
Looks great.
All right. So in terms of the copy, do we have any preferences about the right one versus the left one, assuming that the typo is fixed?
I mean, my, my feeling is always to make it about the person, so when I would say, when it says, we want your feedback, we want to hear from you. I always feel like that's demanding rather than like, you know, your voice is valuable and. Something like that. I'm not, I'm not a marketing person, so I, uh.
Yeah.
I don't have, um, new language, so that's why I guess I kind of prefer the tell town meeting, study committee, how, how well town meeting works for you. Um. You know, then instead of we want your feedback, would be like, share your feedback, or your feedback matters or something like that.
Yes, I also like that one as well for, for those reasons. I would, wondering if we can somehow incorporate, uh, ask that we would like responses whether or not people have attended. Um, so people know that everyone's invited to participate and we're interested in that. Um, but I have to think about how to do that.
Well, that's, that's a good question, like, what about like, uh, what will it take to see you at town meeting next year? Something like that. And then, and then it would be kind of like, you know, it implied that you didn't have to attend in the, in the past. So maybe on the second, we want to hear from you.
So not a lot of room in this, right? So, so, and also a tight, tight, tight timeline. So if we go with the guy on the right, then we want your feedback, could be share your feedback. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, and then we want to hear from you. Um, uh, would be what, 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 what would be different?
That's, that's where I'd love to see, um, what would it take to see you next year? You know, I know, I'm, I don't think there's quite enough room to say, what would it take to see you from a next year's town meeting? So, um. You know, the other thing is, we don't need so much room for thank you for your participation necessarily, but I, I could do without that. Um.
I see.
I, I like that, you know, that you could contact the town manager's office for more information or request.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's also a lot, but.
That's very useful because it's a digital on the survey.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so, um, uh, you, um. Suggest changing the copy, we want to hear from you, there's something, don't know what, but, but we need to figure that out by tomorrow, so.
Well, some, something like. Ten words. It would be double that. You know, um.
And then thank you for your participation could be cut.
Right.
We want to hear from you. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, so, um, uh.
Those are some thoughts, if you want to bring them back to Donna, um.
Yeah, again, it has to be sort of settled tomorrow morning, so.
Right.
Uh, uh, I'll, I'll follow up on that. Uh, uh, I'll, I'll follow up on that. Um.
Yeah, I like Kristen's suggestions. I think that makes sense.
Good, thank you. Good.
I mean, Katie, is there, is there a shorter way to say, you know, haven't been to town meeting? We want to hear from you, you know, like it would still, you know, we, that's, I would, I would take either of those things.
I feel like you have a way with words. I can't come up with something succinct off the top of my head right now.
Yes, that's, that's, that's a lot of space. The other thing is, I mean, yeah, okay. So, so just try one of those, Eric, I think, which is, you know, haven't, haven't been to town meeting, question mark. We want to hear from you, or you like and then what would it take for you or? So the only thing I'm gonna note there is you also want to hear from people who are going to town meeting. So you don't, you don't want to make it necessarily so specific, I feel like. We're gonna hear from people who've been to town meeting. I'm, I'm not worried that we're not gonna hear from those folks.
So my, my concrete suggestion is that we would cut, thank you for your participation, make the green box shorter. And then I would say whether you attend town meeting or not, comma, we want to hear from you.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that, Shannon?
I think that that should work.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, we can, we can give it a try. I mean, I, I, you know, my understanding is for when we, when we go round and round on these, you know, uh who, you know, who comes to town meeting? Well, you know, um we're, we're really trying to find people that haven't come but would like to come. Um, I mean, it's always good to hear from people who do come. But I think those folks are gonna come anyway, so I just want to make sure uh we it's super clear that like, especially people who
Yeah.
haven't come before. But anyway, I think what you have will be fine and like what you just wrote down.
Yeah, to be clear, we've gone down the route of, of a survey focusing on town meeting as opposed to Concord government or local government and, and that's where we're at with that.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Good. All right. Moving forward to the October public forum, uh, we won't spend a lot of time on this. I think, you know, we've talked about a focus group format. I think we're gonna have to talk about this on Monday. Um, uh, I think to me, the big worry is uh, you know, if it's 20 people, that's cool. If it's 40 people, that's also cool. If we get 100 people at the forum, then um, you know, the idea of breaking up into small groups and talking might be a real challenge. Uh, so um, I think we just need to do a little bit of contention thinking that way. The other thing is that.
We got 100 people, that'd be, we, we'd sign them up. We'd vote, do all our voting for town meeting right there.
Yeah, right. Good, good problem to have. I will see if we have one, right? So, so um, the other thing is uh, uh, not everyone may be comfortable facilitating uh, uh, a group in this setting and from our, our committee. Uh, so I want to give folks, do this on Monday. We'll, I want to give folks a opportunity to opt in or, or to opt out. And I think um it would be helpful before we actually do the thing on the 22nd to have a, a quick like a one-page or facilitation guide so that we got some stuff to work from, both in terms of questions that we're asking and follow-ups, but also things about just things to keep in mind. This is again, this is a pretty senior group in terms of working, working with, with groups in the public. So, so I'm confident that will be good. But I, I want to make sure that we, we feel that we have the right preparation for that. Um, the two questions that are sort of top of mind for me for the forum. Uh, we talked about this one last time. What would make town meeting better? Or is there something would be better than town meeting? And then the second one is, is um, what is a citizen legislature to you, right? Uh, can we agree to disagree? Uh, who are we accountable to at town meeting? And this, this, you know, goes directly into the questions around, you know, privacy for your vote. Uh, and, and what are we doing as a legislature? Are we thinking about me? Are we thinking about the whole town? What is this for? Um, so the wording may not be right, but I think that's a really meaty area to sort of, that's the right word to, to explore. So that's what I'm thinking about. And again, we'll come back to this on Monday. Uh, uh, any comments on this?
I really like how um, you know, that you've got kind of two focus questions. We're not trying to go down a huge list. So that'll allow for kind of some good discussion to meander and things like that. Um, and you said your, your thought would be a relatively short intro, right? So.
Yeah, totally.
We get right in, into the groups, but they, but they still have some context for um you know, timeline or why, why we're doing this and stuff like that. So I think, I think that the more time to talk in groups, that's good. Um. And the only other thing, and uh, yes, I think, I think it's good. Let me pass on.
All right, thank you. Um. Okay, shifting topics. Uh, let me just give the public a chance if anyone from the public has any comments on the forum or the previous discussion. Uh, I see, uh, Scott Gillis, hey, uh, I recognize you. Thank you for joining.
Good, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the welcome, Eric. Um, I just have three quick comments. Um. The first is Lindsay Gillis and I proposed a question for the survey. And hopefully you've all had a chance to read that. It was in the form of an email. And basically it was, would there be any value in having the deliberation on days one or days one and two and only voting on day three?
Mm-hmm.
Or, or day two or day three?
Uh-huh.
So, um, Eric, in your response to me, you indicated, you thanked us and indicated that it would be discussed at the group. I haven't heard any discussion about that question.
I do have, I do have a follow-up on that. Uh, let me get your other two points and I'll come back to you on that one.
Yes, okay. Yes. Um, so that was one point. The second point is regarding um, the meaning of the survey has to be locked down tomorrow. Um, I, you know, after I get my three points out, maybe you can comment on what lockdown means.
Sure.
And then the final thought relates to um some comments that David Allen made and some comments, I think, that Carmen made. Um, and their comments both were emphasizing the importance of uh, being unbiased and truly getting the perspective of those who are surveyed. And I would just encourage the committee to question themselves about every word and every question and ask, is any of my personal bias showing through in this question? Are we feeding any of the participants in the survey to come up with a particular answer?
Mm-hmm.
So just to give you an example, um, I think a very fundamental question we might like to know is simply um, would you prefer your vote at town meeting to be private? Or to be publicly known? That's a very simple question. But the way it's currently worded, especially in your values approach, um, Eric, I don't know that that question really comes out clearly. So I would just ask that the lack of any bias or leading of the public in any particular direction be very seriously considered before this thing is locked down. Um, and, and I guess as a, as a final thought, I, I wouldn't think after all the hard work all of you as volunteers are doing, you, you would want to be criticized for not being unbiased and unleading. Um, but rather just very openly asking the public what their preferences are.
Good. Thank you, Scott. Um, so the, the uh, I, I followed up on that question, though. The one about the deliberation on days one and two and voting at day three.
Yeah.
And it wasn't clear to me in reading the town meeting time uh that there was a real vehicle to do that in a way that was other than really awkward. Um, so it didn't seem workable to me. Um, so I didn't raise it with the group uh to talk about that. Um, I think that in the context of a survey question in this survey, the idea of, of separating deliberation uh from decision from voting uh, uh, is consistent. I actually think it's a really interesting idea and I had the same thought myself earlier. Um, but I think that the question about separating deliberation from decision might speak to that. I'm reluctant to ask that question specifically in the survey. Um, and I recognize that we didn't discuss it as a group about that, but that that's my read is that I, I'm not sure that it's a workable proposal, given the framework that we have for, for running town meeting presently.
Thank you, Eric. I appreciate your opinion. Um, Lindsay and I didn't have an opportunity to share some of the benefits of that with the group, nor did any members of your team that I'm aware of have any um, opportunity to comment. For example, I thought Carmen might have had a perspective on that or Eric that might have been helpful. So, so fair. We, we're happy that we shared the thought, um, but I must say I'm disappointed that you as chairman um unilaterally decided that it didn't deserve to go forward.
Good. Thank you. I respect your comment. Uh, uh, and it makes sense to me to try to pick it up again, uh, but not in the context of the survey at this time. Uh, second, the lockdown, it's simply that uh, uh, the resource who uh is uh implementing the survey is leaving on holiday uh tomorrow evening. Uh, and so uh, we, my, my, my use of language in lockdown was simply that we need to finish the survey. Uh, because we're not gonna have really the opportunity to do edits beyond tomorrow. So that, that's what I mean by that. Uh, I think your comment around unbiased uh is, is um, uh, well taken. I think it's hard for me, I'll say, to recognize when there is bias in my language or not. Uh, I think, you know, uh, as a group, I think we've made an effort to, to um phrase these questions in terms that are clean, uh, or, you know, devoid of bias, but I, I recognize that bias creeps in. Uh, so uh, I think, you know, uh, Shannon shared a link the other, the chat uh for this deck. Um, and uh, you know, if you have the opportunity between, you know, now uh, and midday tomorrow uh to revive, to suggest different language for these questions as opposed, I would welcome that. I realize it's a short turnaround time, but I think in terms of uh keeping the possibility of, of cleaner language open, that's the best I can do. Um, and Scott, it looks to say you have a, an additional comment, so I'll take that, please.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Eric. So I had spent quite a bit of time reviewing the um, draft questionnaire and then particularly these four questions, and I watched them evolve. And they evolved in, in my opinion, from being somewhat biased to being quite objective and it's the, it's the top half. And so I was generally quite happy with the questions as they were um available up to just before this meeting. During this meeting, and I guess the committee found out at five o'clock that there was a substantial rewrite by the chairman of this committee that has, in my opinion, some significant changes in um whether it's biased or not. So, so the whole process, um, I thought was a terrific process and it had vol- evolved to a point, especially in these four questions, that I thought was quite good, quite unbiased and fairly clear. And then the chairman's work, um, God bless him for being chairman and doing all this heavy lifting. But the chairman's work kind of came at the 11th hour on a survey that is incredibly important to understand the will of the people. Um, and it has to be locked down by tomorrow. It just um concerns me that um something can happen this late in the game and sort of disregard all the hard work and uh that led up to the four questions that were available to the public up until this meeting.
Well, Scott, thank you for your comment. Uh, I, I think it, it's a difficult process to, to get this stuff out. Uh, I think we're doing the best that we can, both as, as a committee and I'll say individually, uh, but I respect your point of view on this. Um, um, if I think if I were to summarize, it would say that it would be that, I think, given the four questions that we've looked at tonight, that your preference is that the top versions of the questions you, you feel are gonna more accurately uh, or more fairly represent the questions before the town and that, I'll say that your preference is that, that we don't use the ones in the bottom. Is that fair? That's a yes or no?
Um, yes, and only be, only because I don't think there's enough time to put as not, as much effort into the bottom questions to make sure they're unbiased and not uh leading.
Got it.
That has already been given to the top questions.
Got it. More time to bake and more eyes on the pie, as it were. Good, thank you. Uh, Kristen Hager, please.
Um, Eric, can you go to the schedule of meetings um that we, that we have coming up? Because I think that's important, although the, the survey and I, I appreciate the feedback and it's always good to have public comment. I wish we had more on these meetings. I think that's what we're really trying to do is hear from people as much as possible. I mean, I guess I'm hoping that with proper publicity when we discuss remote voting, uh, clickers, like at some of these upcoming meetings, I'm really hoping that we have public comment on those meetings as well as in the public forum. So I'm hoping that October, well, starting September 30th, um, our meetings, the forum, and then in combination with the survey, I'm hoping that that is an opportunity for people to learn, but also weigh in because, you know, I don't want to rely solely on the survey. Um, so I, I just, whatever we need to do to, to publicize, because Eric, I appreciate that, you know, you and, and Katie, everybody's been trying to make it as, as brief as possible and, and there's real trade-off in doing that. So you do kind of need the, the discussion part that's gonna happen in, in the upcoming meetings we have. So I hope that's uh, going to be a, a good exchange of information and, you know, we're gonna hear, I, you know, I think, you know, we've invited the presenters of the articles. So, you know, the people who are really informed about kind of the different options will be there, can answer, you know, more specific questions and, and kind of present uh both sides as well. I, I hope, I think it's gonna be a really exciting month.
Yeah, I hope so. Good, thank you. Uh, moving into the, the solutions, uh, uh, prioritizing solution discussion. So three themes came up. A previous meeting, I think, um, uh, you know, this real appetite for shorter meetings, right? Uh, and looking through uh a document that I shared the other packet a couple of meetings ago uh with a whole broad set of potential solutions, some of which are good and some of which may not be. Um, things that address the ideal of a shorter meeting overall, these items here. Uh, I think a different way to look at that is, is what, what allows me, you know, me, me, you know, me voter uh to spend less time at meeting. How can I budget my time at meeting? And there are a couple of features, so to speak, that, that would support that. Uh, and then I think the third one, and you know, this is, comes under the rubric of, of accessibility, is what makes meeting, you know, what makes it, takes less effort to attend meeting. Uh, and there, you know, we have a, a set of features, so to speak, as well. Um, and so uh, uh, and, you know, I, what I did was to also uh, um, look at the grid that we developed or I developed, you know, given the inputs uh in part from the work that Katie and Kristen had done and the, the set of possible solutions to look at as well as sort of what, what are things that we could look at uh, uh, for town meeting 25 um, or that we can implement or that, that uh, the select board or town or staff could implement this year that would have an impact in town meeting 25. How do we prioritize that stuff for it? So looking at a very broad way, I came up with this as a set of things that we'd like to talk about this fall and the idea of uh basically identifying themes for the meetings that we have this fall to focus on that. So Monday, the 30th, remote voting and features, so to speak, feature solutions. Uh, I'm using my software head a little bit here, features, um, to talk about less time at meeting. Uh, the 15th, uh, shorter meetings. Uh, um, uh, we have specifically, I'd like to discuss clickers uh in depth uh with the article, uh, seen a second, Katie. With the article, um, petitioners in particular, uh, uh, on the 28th of October, I'm still waiting for confirmation from one member of that, of, of the petitioning team. Uh, and then on the 12th, then it would be um looking at the issue, questions of less effort to attend, and that would be the referendum town meeting, the, the thing that uh Dina Skanadis had, had proposed. Uh, and the possibility of representative town meeting. So that's what I'm looking at for uh, the layout of solutions discussions over the next uh six weeks or so. Um, there's a lot to talk about. I think it's, it's fair to say that we won't have everything decided uh on this by the time we get to the select board in early December, but we'll do the best that we can. Uh, Katie, please.
Um, I guess I was in my head having trouble differentiating shorter meetings versus less time at meeting. So we're going for less time at meeting. It's that people can opt in and out of the parts that make sense. at meeting. So we're going for less time at meeting. It's that people can opt in and out of the parts that make sense for them. So the individual can spend less time at meetings and shorter meeting overall is like the overall total length of the meeting is shorter. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, Kristin Hagerty, please.
Thanks for asking that question. That's a, I think that's a good point. Um, and any, like, uh, I'm sorry that we're not going to have a rich discussion about shorter meeting tonight. But I do think that that's the, you know, these solution-focused things need to happen when we have kind of the full committee. And I guess my question is, do we have any, um, does the appetite to meet in person, do we think that we would, that that would be better for kind of hashing out some of these solutions? And unfortunately, it's just the three of us right now. It's not really a fair question for the three of us, so.
Uh, yeah, I'll ask you to fold that into Monday because I think it would be better to have that conversation remotely on Monday. Um, but I, I think it's an important question. Um, uh, let's see, I think so, so, um, yeah, I talked a little bit about this the last time. Yeah, Katie, please.
I guess I'm, I'm curious and maybe we can talk a little bit about how it with, maybe with the three of us, how best to have these conversations to get everyone's feedback. Um, because I think that's the, maybe the piece that has been lacking is how to have like a robust discussion with everyone with the hand rating. It makes it a little bit tough, but I do prefer remote. Um, so curious what your thoughts are on that, Eric, if you have ideas.
I'm, I'm, this is actually something I really wanted to talk about. Um, so, so, uh, we have a lot to cover, right? Some of it is, is actually, um, um, like, there's a lot of, 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 with the clickers discussion, right? I, I think, you know, someone might want to be me, uh, you know, I want to talk to the people in Wayland who, who are using clickers now. I'd like to talk to, uh, the group in Sharon, uh, that's planning on, uh, piloting clickers, uh, this year. Um, there are other, you know, we're, we're, we're ringed by communities using clickers. So I think it's a good idea to actually talk to some of the, some of the folks who, are they clerks or moderators? Who are, who are working with clickers to find out a little bit more about the field experience there. Um, so there's things to do, right? And in terms of researching some of these things. Um, you know, so, so I don't think it's a good idea for me to sort of do all that research and go, yeah, here it is, right? Uh, so I, I would like to understand how it is that, that we can, um, use the full resources of the team to, to, is it to research a question, research a feature, as it were, and make a presentation, uh, to the committee? Uh, um, is it that, you know, we, you know, a week ahead, we provide some links in the packet and then we show up all having done some reading? Um, I think, you know, there's a piece of basically getting informed about, you know, what's the idea, but, you know, what would, what would the potential benefit be? You know, what, how would it work? We don't have to have all the details about how it would work, but I should, you know, should be able to explain. So with clickers, for example, that being, you know, we'd either rent or rent or buy. There'd be a big box of clickers and you show up at meeting, you get a clicker. They, they do something and you walk away and then, you know, whatever, right? So, so, so there's a story around how it worked that we should be able to clearly say. Um, some cases like, you know, remote voting or clickers, and there's real salience around cost, I, I think. Um, a key question is like, who is actually going to make this work, right? Who's going to deploy it? Who owns that operation? Uh, and, you know, I think the, the philosophical questions around, is this the right thing for, for what town meeting is supposed to be? Um, uh, is it, is it going to fit with Concord, you know, given our, our traditional meeting and so on? Those questions are things that we clearly have to talk about, but I guess the question is, you know, who's going to organize the information? And do we look at presenting a brief of sorts? Um, do we just all do our reading and, and dive in? Uh, you know, I think this is my first effort at kind of a discussion rubric, right? And my intention is that tomorrow, uh, for the packet for Monday is to basically look at these questions, look at the resources that I have in hand for the remote town, for the, uh, uh, remote voting and see if I can put together a bit of a brief that will inform our discussion for Monday. Uh, Katie, please.
Yeah, I, that's really helpful. Um, and the things that popped into my head as you were chatting about it is I think, I mean, I think it might make sense to divvy up these solution topics and give a set of them to each person on the committee. And we can, you know, fill out some sort of form or rubric like you have here about each item. And then we're given a date to present those items and maybe we have a short discussion about each one. Um, that way you're not taking the bulk of the work and people are, um, feeling engaged with the content and, and potentially making a draft recommendation, given their research on the topic. Um, and maybe a second thing that also came to mind is the rubric, I think, is a really clear picture of the, the one you had before, that's like a little bit color-coded with like high-impact areas. Um, maybe even going through those line by line with the committee and gut checking, like, is this a high-impact item? Is this accurate for like costing? Um, and that might help us sort out which ones, um, are a- addressing the needs most adequately.
Sure.
Are those the two thoughts I had, um, for approaches?
Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, Kristin Hagerty, please.
Um, yes, very. W- welcome to divvy up the work. Um, I, I just want to be careful that we don't get too presentation folk, uh, heavy and that there's enough time for discussion from all the committee members and whomever attends from the public.
Sure.
But I, I understand that you have to have, you know, a baseline for discussion.
Yeah, mostly I was thinking like a one slider, like, here's what it is. This would be kind of the pros we, that we have, the cons we have, and maybe some like areas for consideration, but nothing, yeah, I agree. We don't want to spend all day with presentation.
Um, yeah, there's, uh, my thought was sort of a foot classroom in the sense that, that if all the, if all the, all the research is, is packaged, uh, and shared, then, and we've read it, then, then we can really dive in and, and our conversation together. Um, I guess that's what, what's, what's. Um, um, and, you know, for the discussions, so, so I think for, for example, with the remote voting discussion, uh, coming up on the 30th. Uh, I think my goal is that we, um, uh, get an understanding as to what that's about, that we raise the questions that we have and that we go, what information did we lack, right? In order to make a decision about it, make a recommendation about it. Because I think that, that there's the, the discussion piece and the, the exploring piece. Then if there's focused inquiry that we need to do following that, we'll do that. Uh, and then I think, um, we'll, we'll actually need to schedule, uh, a vote, uh, for recommendations. It may be that we wind up voting on a bunch of things, uh, uh, the, the, the meeting before, the meeting before the select board meeting. Uh, but my initial interest is in basically making sure that we all understand what this is about and that we identify where information gaps are. Uh, uh, Katie, please.
Yeah, I'm not sure how, um, you would feel about this, but potentially having votes along the way about recommendations or draft recommendations, where we can all agree again at the end, just to not, um, backload everything to right before the select board and then like potentially run out of time with these topics. Um, so just a, a thought, but I appreciate having, you know, more time and more information is always better.
I certainly hope that we don't have another meeting like tonight where, where we have a vanishing quorum. Um, I think there are a few things where, where, um, I think some of the bigger questions, I think, you know, I, I think the remote, the remote voting one is, is potentially a complicated question. Uh, and it's a short lead time. So, so, um, uh, I think a few other things like a consent calendar might be pretty easy for us to sort of make a vote on, uh, after our discussion. Um, so I, I get your point. Uh, I think we'd like to accomplish as much as can as we do, but I also don't want to force a decision if we don't feel that we can really make a well-informed one. Um, Carmen, please let me just give you an opportunity to comment on our process. Uh, because, um, uh, I, you know, you've seen a lot and, uh, I, I don't know what I don't know. So. Uh, uh, you're on mute, so, so.
I think she was a thumbs up.
Okay. Oh, good. Good. Thank you. Um, uh, any comments from the public on this topic about, uh, uh, our approach to, to uh, prioritizing what we're going to talk about and the general timing for things? Uh, I'm taking public questions on this right now. Be known, um, do we have any other comments, uh, 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 from the committee on, on this or actually are we moving towards a close?
Yeah, I mean, I think that what would be helpful in the bridge, um, if, I don't know if your article is going to cover this, is so maybe we do another, a letter, but just to let people know, hey, here are some upcoming meetings and the things, topics we're going to talk about. So that if they want to write in, you know, especially with the, the email address, town meeting study committee email address. And, you know, just really inviting, uh, you know, thoughts and, and, you know, to the email address and also in the meetings.
Good. Good. Thank you. Okay. Well, I feel that we've covered our agenda, uh, and more. Um, and so I think that, uh, I'm gonna, uh, determine that we're going to close the meeting. David Allen, is he your hand? Uh, please.
Thanks. Click these bloody icons. Um, just to confirm, please, uh, what's going to serve the effort here? Uh, the material is going to be up on the, uh, the town website. I think we go to the committee's, uh, page there, we'll find it. When do you need comment back that serve you? Uh, you obviously have to digest it and go forward and so forth. Is it midnight? Is it sometime in the morning?
You're talking about the, the revisions to the questions?
Yes, exactly.
Um, uh, if I could get it by nine AM tomorrow, that would be good. Uh, if that's realistic for you.
Oh, of course. Yes, sure, sure. And frankly, you're the one who's, uh, dealing with a whole load here. It's, it's you who matter in this. So if nine AM is what's, you sure that's going to serve you? Don't need it by midnight, put it that way.
Uh, I'm, I'm done, believe me.
Me too. So.
Yeah.
Bye, come morning. Thanks.
Good. All right. Thank you. Uh, okay. Well, well, no further ado. Um, again, thank you, uh, for the folks in the public who are still on. Uh, I really appreciate your comments, especially critical ones. And, uh, uh, I look forward to meeting again on Monday, the 30th at 7:00 PM. Uh, thank you, everyone. And, uh, I'm going to say that the meeting is now closed at eight 22:00 PM.